You did, you're the man today, sir. Why do we dance?
Okay, thank you guys. You can report on your next topic as well, right? Okay. Well, have a great weekend. Please, sir.
5:30 PM on Thursday, August 5th, 2021. I call this special meeting of the King's Blood-Defended School District to order to have a roll call. Ryan Kufal.
Here.
David Garcia. David Garcia. Elizabeth Ramos.
Here.
James Lucy.
Here.
John Salinas.
Here.
Cory Garza Jr. Cory Garza Jr. Steven Wright.
Here.
But the record shows that there is a quorum of board members present. This meeting has been posted in accordance with Government Code, Chapter 551, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. We move to the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to Texas pledges. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
This meeting will be live video streamed at https://bit.ly/3sroelqr. We move to item number four, adoption of the agenda. We have a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Liz Ramos.
Second.
Seconded by James Lucy. Public participation. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the board?
No, sir.
Item number six. The board went into closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074. To deliberate, consider, and follow. A, consider the resignation of contracted employees. Consider employment of contracted employee, special education coordinator. Consider employment of Harvey Elementary School Assistant Principal. Discussion with legal counsel regarding legal and personnel matters. No action will be taken until we return to open session. We're entering closed session at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
We're turning to open session at six thirteen P M. A, Consider Approval of the Resignation of Contractors and Employers. Both emotions. Both emotions.
I move to accept the resignation. Upon. Selection of a suitable replacement.
You go second.
One second.
Okay. Discussion. New discussion. Okay. I'll call the. I'll call the question then. We'll call vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
James Goosey?
Yes.
Don Salinas?
Yes.
Steven Kreitch, yes. I have two absences, so it's five oh. Motion carries. We, to approval of appointment of contracted employee, special education coordinator. Both motion.
I have a motion to approve the contract as presented for special education coordinator.
Second.
Oh, second.
Discussion. No discussion, call question. We'll call vote again, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Ramos?
Yes.
Ms. Goosey?
Yes.
Don Salinas?
Yes.
And I vote yes, but we have two absent votes, so carries five zero. Motion carries. C, consider approval of appointment of Harvey Elementary School assistant principal. Both motion.
Move that we accept the recommendation of superintendent that's presented in closed session.
Second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Discussion. We'll call vote, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Ramos?
Yes.
Ms. Goosey?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion carries five zero with two absence. Item rate, there be no further action.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to bring forth four matters please.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have two matters I'd like to bring forth to the board. I'm going to pluralize here. I would honestly like to see on an agenda within the next thirty days. Policy that gives the superintendent full responsibility to accept resignations as she so states.
There's no restriction of, of pay grade or rate?
I guess we can, we could talk about that once it's put on the agenda and gone into discussion.
Okay.
And talk legal.
You have a second item? Or you want to do these separately?
Can we vote on this?
No. But we cannot take a vote on any item that was not sufficiently put on the agenda. The best that can be done is this has now been recorded in, in open session.
In minutes.
Put on, on others that it, it needs to be on a future agenda.
Okay, I spoke to Tazby and they said that you can actually vote to put something on a future agenda, but not actually vote and act on it.
I don't know that our policy will allow that.
Mr. Maddox, I think he's on there.
He's just joining you, wait a minute.
Hi, can y'all hear me? Do we have audio?
Can we hear you?
Okay, and the, the question before the board is whether a board can take action to place an item on a future agenda?
Correct.
Uh, it is possible in theory to do so. It, it doesn't violate Roberts or the Open Meetings Act. It almost makes more sense to just have that item submitted. To the superintendent board president in the future because it's not an agenda item at the current meeting. We don't have like a. Sometimes you'll see sort of a generic action item for, for motions of this type that we don't have on our agenda. So I would encourage the board at this time to, to just meet with the superintendent and board president on some of the future agenda items.
Okay, that, that, that to me is an issue because getting anything on the agenda right now, considering half, half of the board is in training, so the other half can't really. Work a policy. Um, I did speak to Tazby and they told me that you can vote to pretty much push somebody on an agenda without having an approval of the superintendent or the president, as long as the board agrees to do so.
What I'd like to see happen here is that, that I know there have been some issues. And. They have not really been brought specifically to the attention of the board. We're to the fore. We are within a week or so of, of beginning some board operating procedure. Many boards, and, and what I would like for us to, to consider in the future, many boards on the very last items is just a, a laundry list of exactly this. A public recitation of, this is a concern to me that I would like to see addressed on a, on a future agenda. I think the fact that you've brought it to the public. Right now. Add some pressure to get this on the agenda.
I almost feel like we should vote, see if you can vote.
We can't vote because it's not, we can't vote because it's not on the agenda as a, an agenda item, but.
Well, you can, it's not against the law to do so, but I will go ahead and I will take a step back due to, you know, him being a president of the past. Um, but I really do think that that policy is important. It allows the superintendent to do her job, it's her job, if we get one in the future, not. To do their job without being micromanaged by the board or the rest of staff. So I really believe that's important and I, I wish we could have put it to vote, but I don't want to step back in allowing the superintendent and the president to do so at, hopefully within thirty days. That gives two, two regular meetings time frames to get it on the next agenda.
Mr. Maddox, there's no way to take a consent, the board can't make a consensus. Is there?
Well, so the type of vote you're speaking of is technically a consensus. So because. What Tazby's saying is, well, it, it's not something the board's taking immediate action on, therefore the public is not entitled for their three days or seventy-two hours notice. So technically you can just kind of, you know, wing it, but in my, my opinion, that's not best practice and it's, it's not sticking to being agenda specific. And so I would like to just either, as was discussed, have a generic action item on the end of our agendas for this sort of vote. Or see if we can't work this out internally over the next thirty days and, and get you guys where you want to be.
Well, that sounds enough well like a can to me that we're going to kick.
But only if all us board members allow.
So in thirty days, if it hasn't been put on the agenda, I can call for a vote. Without, without sitting here saying, oh, maybe we should wait a little bit longer because a tornado hit, you know, thirty miles from us and we're busy doing that. So that's the only thing I worry about.
I think as long as the administration has sufficient time to examine that policy and whatever other policy we're going to mention. I think that's, we should at least have an input from administrative on what, what they feel is right or where they support that or don't support that. But again, we do have a record of not putting things on the agenda of late in a timely manner. And we have used, well, we'll do this later, we'll do this later, and I think that's time to stop. That's my personal.
So I'll agree to this. If I don't see it on the agenda within thirty days or within two regular meetings, then I will call this.
Yeah, and, and board, I just want you to be cognizant of, let's say there is an, an, an action on that motion tonight. Uh, you know, it's not a directive to the superintendent because that's not on the agenda. You can't supersede the board president's authority by board motion in this capacity. So it really is just sort of a consensus like Colonel Kreitz is saying. So, yeah, I do encourage you guys to just, let's see if we can resolve this. Over the next thirty days and maybe craft our agendas in the future in a way that allows you to do what you want to do.
Okay, do you have a second item?
Uh, yes, I do. It has to contain a policy, GE local relations with parent organizations. Stop me in my formative forum, but I'm just handing out information on it. Which presented for public information.
It's posted on the website, is it not?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
It's already out in the domain?
If you need to see what it is.
I have a copy already.
Mr. Maddox?
Yes, sir.
Educate me again, I forget every time. When the policies at the bottom have an X, does that mean that we have altered it?
Yes, they usually meet that's gone through some sort of a change, uh, that's typically gone through Tazby. Either they've changed it or we've changed it.
Well, I thought the Tazby changes had one letter and if we had changed it, then. Then it had, and I just don't, I, I don't recall what that is, and that might be a Tazby question, but, okay.
No, that's, that's correct, yep.
There's been some recent concerns in the county. I just heard some phone calls on this, so I went ahead and I printed out this, uh, policy. It got five minutes, right? I shouldn't take all five minutes. Uh, if you look at the second page, there's GE local, that's PTOs. It's just a small paragraph of what that policy is, but then it goes on to, uh, booster clubs and the locals. So I thought that was interesting that there's no legal on that, so I went ahead and I started out using URL booster club guidelines. I'm having some issues with the language in this policy. Um. It just needs to be looked over. To match URL guidelines. And hopefully if we can get our head on the booster bylaws, make sure that the booster bylaws are. Mirror image of what our policy is.
Um, okay, I, if I could, I, I'd like, I'd like to keep this in the same context of the previous action. The administration have time to look at this over. I will add however, that I've read this policy that if I had anything to do. If I had anything to do with it, I would throw it away and start a white piece of paper because that's how bad it is.
The same here.
That's how bad it is.
So I really think that we, we should put this on a future agenda, get a look over, make sure we follow the bylaws or any other state legal federal laws on this, make sure that. Um, our policy matches up with everybody else and that we're not overreaching and our, our language specifies what is, that we do with the district, with the, with the. Booster organization to, to be compliant, or them to be compliant with us as well. So it's not technically deleting this whole thing. I think it's taking a look at editing it and making sure we're. We're in line with all the other laws that.
It's time to start building anything.
Correct. But I don't agree with that because I, you know, that's what's called on it.
So I will, I'll make, I'll make a note in the minutes for those.
Let me ask a question for Mr. Maddox. Um, so like the two policies that Ms. Ramos has brought up. Are we able to like send our local policies like to Tazby to help get some guidance from them? And that might vet some of this, you know, recommendations before?
And my bet is that if we took these two policies, the first one, Tazby'd say, I don't know what the heck you're talking about. Uh, we don't know why you did what you did because that, that was unique to this. If we were to send the second one dealing with booster clubs. I bet Tazby sends back a book this thick because this is an issue in every single district there is out there. And so it's not that we need to reinvent the wheel, we need to see what the best practice is for other districts.
And that's why I touched the URL. I just don't have copies of bylaws of all of these boosters. I don't even know how many you have. I know that they have to be written down, so the board's not involved. I do want to say that in here. Now just go, I think I got one more minute left, so if you look at information required, one through four. Uh, my question is, has this been done in the last couple of years?
Have you ever seen it come into your office? Because we're all supposed to come to you.
All right.
And the principle.
And then the first one says the superintendent or principal should have the veto power over any official action of a parent booster organization. My question is the language in here. Which one comes first? So who overrides? Can a superintendent override a principal's decision? Who does the decision follow first? Where, where does it get, when there's confusion involved and pointing fingers?
Even before that?
Right.
Do they even follow the fourth?
Number four, there is this that, that, uh, election of officers shall be conducted through a systematic process that allows any eligible person to be nominated. What is this process? Is the booster following bylaws?
Because we know where you're going with it and you're, you're wanting, you're wanting the board to have some kind of consensus that we need to split this in the next thirty days. So we don't need to kick the can down the road. And I thought I'm going to put it in the minutes.
Okay.
And I'm not going to ask for, for a vote occurrence on that. Sue me afterwards if you don't have a lot.
Board, I, I would, I would second it.
From a, from a, um. That's the word I'm looking for, Mr. Maddox. I don't want to, I don't want to break the code ball or break the rules. I've probably already broken enough of, but.
No worries, sir. I, I was just saying that the, the, the interlacing of URL and boosters and the district, which, which can be three, three separate things. Uh, it can get really tricky and, and there's a, there's a couple more things I think I'll, I'd like to explain in our next executive on that, but. Uh, we just do need to be very careful, especially when it comes to boosters and, uh, and their interplay with, with the district. So there's sometimes some of those policies are kept vague for specific reasons, and I, I know that's not very explanatory, but again, this is more of an executive session discussion. So, um, we can certainly look at it. Let's just be careful with how we do it. And to go back to the prior question. Tazby, in terms of reviewing policies, well, if you ask them the recommendation, they're going to say, here's our model policy, like, you know, that is Tazby's default recommendation. Other than that, they just review for legalities to make sure you're not adopting a local policy that violates state or federal law. So they're not really much of a regulatory review entity besides just their standard model policy.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight. There be no further action while your motion to adjourn. Second. Affirmation. The A, those voting I, say I.
Aye.
Nay. carries five zero. The King's eyes, the board practices to conduct a workshop to discuss the following, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, twenty twenty-one tax rate. Placer County appraisal district order directors. Give about five minutes and then we'll move into the budget workshop. About that time?
Okay.
Okay.
It's okay.
Okay, we got everybody back?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, start the uh start the budget. Mr. Pitts, is that your baby?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's see what the kid looks like.
Good evening, Board Vice President, Lieutenant Colonel Stephen Kreitz, Dr. Perez, and members of the board. Before we dive into the budget for 2021, 2022, let me just give a visual where we are in the budget process. We're right here in orange on August the fifth for our budget workshop. Once we have looked at the budget and decided what we're going to post, we need to post it for at least 10 days in the paper. We post the notice in the paper and we're gonna take a look at that notice in just a moment. We also will post the comparison between last year's budget and this year's budget on our website. We're gonna take a look at that in just a moment as well, too. And that needs to be posted 10 days before the public hearing. So we will announce our intent to put it in the paper on Monday. It'll come out on Thursday, the 12th. Then 10 days from that will put us at the 22nd. So the 23rd on that Monday, we'll have the public hearing at 6:00 PM. The public hearing will be to not only discuss the budget, the tax rate, there's also a requirement to discuss property values as well, too. So we'll talk about that at that time as well. The next night, we will approve it at 5:30 and finally, the next morning, we will post it on our website. So that's just a review of where we are with the budget and what we still have in front of us. Before we take a look at at the budget, this is the time of the year that I usually get questions, where do we end up last year? And the answer is, there's still several big things that we're waiting for. What do we know right now? We know what we spent from September 1 through July 31. What do we not know? What we're gonna still spend in August, although we we have a good idea of what we're gonna spend in August. We also don't know the settle up. In September, we still have some bills that were for services done in August, but we don't pay them until September. So we don't have all our expenditures yet. Another thing we don't know is our revenues. We have a good idea of what our revenues are, but in September, the state does a settle up of what our ADA was, what our property values were, how much tax we should collect. We have to still submit all the taxes that we collect through August. And they're gonna give us a settle up. Ours is going to be, we're gonna have to pay money back because we, two years ago, we put into the budget that we were gonna have 3,000, pretty close to 3,100 students. And the last year, we had 2,559 students. So we did, they paid us for 3,100 students. We only had 2,559. So we'll have that settle up in September as well. Now, they, you submit your attendance projections two years ahead of time. So this was in February of 2019, before I took over my current position. You have to submit attendance projections for two years in advance, and they pay you the next two years based on that attendance projection. So they paid us last year and this year as if we were had 3,100 kids that came to school every day. We only have 2,559. So in September of every year, there's always a settle up.
Up there.
I thought it was more students than that.
Estimating there, we're off by 550 kids.
That's correct. Again, I don't.
Okay, what didn't happen on your watch?
Yes.
But that's a pretty chance.
We had an average of like 2,800 plus kids.
You're you're thinking about enrollment versus ADA. So we we had around 2960 enrollment near the end of the year, but the average for the whole year was 2,559. In the first six weeks, we were around 2,400 that came the first six weeks of the school year. So the average for the whole year was 2,559 students.
So at the end of the first year of the two-year production, did we have the opportunity to come back and make an adjustment?
No, it's given every two years. So I
Two years, you're locked in for the next two years.
Well, what I had, so what I had to do, yes. So what I had to do was realize that we're gonna have to pay the the take back a whole bunch at the end of September, so I had to build that into our budget.
If you lowball it and you get more, will they pay the difference out in those two years?
They will. So but you are, it's a it's a first indicator that you're supposed to do your attendance projections as much as possible, and you can be downgraded on that. The the disadvantage of lowballing is they then don't give you the money during the year. So you get it all at the end of the year and you don't want that because then you don't have enough operating revenue. But I, so I'm, we're gonna look at the budget for next year and our projections to the state for next year was 2,650 and then the next year, 2,700. Those were the two that we put in there. We think that those are much more reasonable. Given our 2,559 this year in a COVID year, we should have a greater ADA the next two years. So that's our projection. And again, we won't have as big a big a settle up in the next few years because we think our projections are much more on target.
Now, you base that projection on what?
So in what our numbers were like pre-COVID?
We were 550 off for pre-COVID.
Well, so, correct, but the year before, we were at 2697 the year before. So again, we did lose students during COVID. 2650 is a conservative estimate of the previous year, 2697.
We're basing our next two years estimates on 2018?
No. So 2020, 21 was 2,559. 2019, 20 was 2,697. So we're basing it on pre-pandemic, what it was at snapshot October the 30th, which was before the pandemic happened.
Okay, those are both ADA.
Those are both ADA, correct.
And we have typically run a 10% or less absentee attendance.
Yes, 10% or less.
The enrollment.
Now, the other issues in September that another big one is always our property value protests. We, the the county has certified values that have been, well, historically lower than the comptroller values of the state. So that's a big settle up process that happens in September, too. We're hoping to get $488,000 closer than we would have without the property value test protests. We should have final results in September. And then the third thing this year that is a big one is that they are doing something called Hold Harmless for Attendance, where they are, they originally told us that they're gonna not charge us at all for any any attendance that was below 2,578 for the first half of the year. The problem is that then once S R 2 came along, they said, you know what? We're gonna take that money away from you because S R 2 can be used to cover that expense. So they're still gonna take money away for our S R 2 for the first part of the year. We're estimating about $300,000 and we're gonna have to make up the difference in S R 2.
We factor S R 2 in our budget?
So we're gonna we're gonna talk about it when we look at it in just a second. So S R 2 has not been, the grant has not been finalized yet. So we have some things that we factored into the budget yet, but then there's other things that hopefully we can we can maybe supplement some of the things that are built into the general fund budget that you see right now and take into S R 2, and we'll talk about those when we talk about the budget. So so that's why right now we can't give you a solid answer where we're gonna end up at the end of the year in September. By the end of September, we'll have a better answer. The auditor is the final say where we end up because there's some things that carry over from one year to the next year. So by the end of December, beginning of January, we should have a final audit and we'll have the final numbers of where we ended up.
So let me ask you this question. I keep asking the superintendent, where are we gonna end up the year at? Give me a swag. Give me a guess.
Well, best last guess, before they they talked about this whole harmless was was a million dollars deficit with the whole harmless possibly as the worst case scenario, 1.3 million. We're still, we're still looking to see what we might be able to maybe redistribute to S R S R 2 this year. So best estimate right now, somewhere between 750,000 and 1.3 million deficit for last year. But again, there's still many things to
4.3 again.
4.5.
4.5, we're down to 750. I mean, that's that's good. Not looking to give force in the mouth. It's just it's just, it helps going into the budget, right into the budget process.
This is pre-S R 2.
How 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 much are we gonna be into the reserve fund this year and what our balance is gonna be and and those those kind of things?
Yes, yes.
I'm trying to take a very macro view of this is that if we're at zero, don't care. I mean, maybe that's not a right one, but but when you're four and a half and a hole, get to zero and then we'll worry about counting the pennies to get in the black. I mean,
Right.
We can't do that again. We can't be in the red anymore.
Agreed. And and you'll see that we have it up. We're proposing a balanced budget this next year. So we're gonna take a look at this year's budget. Before I do, I'm gonna call on Dr. Vuskas Cruz in just a minute to talk about an exciting opportunity. And you have a revised budget on your table, and and here's the reason why. When we, the budget that we put in your board packet on Monday included a 1.38 million dollars for a grant that is gonna provide hotspots and devices for students at home. So the reason why we originally put that in the in the budget was because we were gonna have to shell out the money ahead of time, so we'd have to expend it, and then we were gonna get reimbursed at the end, so we'd we'd get a revenue. They would be offsetting. But if we have to pay it upfront and we get the reimbursement, we have to put it in the budget. We have to show that we are getting the revenue from them and we are expending. But we just, Dr. Vuskas Cruz and myself were on the phone for quite a while this morning, and we just found out some exciting news that we don't have to shell out the money upfront. So and he's gonna talk about that a little bit. So basically, what that means for the budget is we're taking that money out of the revenues and we're taking that money out of the expenditures. We're not gonna have to expend that 1.38 million. We're not going to get that 1.38 million back in reimbursement. So that's the only thing that is a change in the new budget that you have from the old budget there because we're not gonna have to pay for that 1.38 million upfront. Dr. Vuskas Cruz, did you want to talk about that opportunity?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good question. It's it's an opportunity, but basically it's a break even.
Yes, it's a break even one way or the other. So we're gonna have a balanced budget either way. The question just is, do we recognize that revenue and expenditures in the budget, or do we take it out because we don't have to pay for it and we're not getting reimbursed for it?
What do we need the money for if we're we're not doing remote learning anymore?
Okay, I will turn that over to Dr. Vuskas Cruz.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Peter Perez, Board vice president, all members, community. The opportunity that Dr. Peter Pitts is talking about is actually out of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And it has two components. One of them is known as the EBB, and that stands for the Emergency Product Benefit. The other one is known as the ECF, and that stands for Emergency Connectivity Fund. So the first one, basically what it does, it is allowing the district to join efforts with all other school districts through a regional center. And I believe the regional center that is providing this is Region Board. They provide discounts that districts transfer over to the families, okay? And it's cancer on laptop devices, tablets, hotspots, or integrated systems, routers, modems, and so on. It implies some significant amount of work because the educational entity has to do the monitoring. The oversight on the devices that are handed over to students, the hospitals also that are given to students, and the integrity of the devices and keeping all records documentation for a period of up to 10 years. The district doesn't receive much of a benefit on that, other than putting devices in the hands of students. Those devices are paid by the household, by the parents, guardians, et cetera. So basically, what they are doing is they are buying a device at a discounted price. Again, it's a very attractive option, and that option has been basically followed by those school districts that do not have a high discount in regards to poverty levels. Okay. Now, Kinsley I S D is a different story. Kinsley I S D has a high discount, and we have been at the 85% discount, meaning that out of every dollar, we pay 50 cents, or the district pays 15 cents. Okay, 1.5, and the federal government pays the remaining. So every day, it's reran on network devices, telecommunications, it is paid by the federal program, and the district only pays 15% of that. This opportunity is coming now to us not at at 85%, it's coming to us at 100% discount. And we don't have to go through a request for proposals process like we have to do with the E R program. All we have to do is get the quota quotes and then submit those to the program, and they will go ahead and examine the application, and they will let us know in a time period that is estimated to be about a couple of months, let's say, September. We submit by the deadline that happens to be August 13. Now, the caveat on this is that we have to bring devices for students not to exceed $400. That is the cap per child. Okay? Regarding the hospital for internet access, the cap is at $250 for the full year. So we look for options out there in the market, and we look for options that have the two systems integrated into one. And we believe that it's possible to buy Chromebook devices that have the built-in internet signal, so our students don't have to carry the Chromebook, carry a hospital, and carry the charger for the hospital, and then dealing with the following problems. Hospitals that are missing, hospitals that are missing batteries, no charges for the hospitals, et cetera. So it is a very attractive idea. Another one of the conditions of the program is that the devices they need to remain in the hands of students. So these devices are not to be demanded by the school district to be, let's say, deposited in cards in classrooms and for them to remain in the school setting, in the school classroom. They need to stay with the student at any given moment. So if a student decides to bring them to school, wonderful. But these devices are for students to engage and for them to continue the instructional, okay, plan at home. So it is, again, very, very attractive, and we definitely do not want to miss out on the opportunity. We are using the possible number, 2,700 devices, because we estimate those have the number of devices that we distribute in the district. You might remember the purchase that the district made back in the summer of 2020, and we got those devices a few weeks before we Twenty and uh, we got those devices uh, a few weeks before we were about to begin the school year. And uh, I believe they have been affected. And yes, uh, we have to go through some uh, scenarios of having to repair devices and the support that we have to provide to the families. But if we're looking again at the opportunity to allow the students to engage even at a higher level. And uh, enclose this gap, okay, in technology, we believe this would be the, the opportunity for us to. Now, we can ask the service provider to submit. An invoice to the Federal Communications Commission because they are with the sponsors to be a. Universal System Fund and we all contribute to the Universal System Fund. We all have cell phones and we pay taxes. So out of those taxes, the FCC comes up with these monies for the uh, citizens of the United States for education. Uh, all in all, again, um. This is an excellent opportunity that we have been examining in a very short period of time. The program is new that it was uh. Launched at the end of uh, June. Uh, we were given only a forty five uh, day window period to go through the whole process. The window closes on the thirteenth of this month. And uh, we have again. A tremendous opportunity that most likely we're not going to see again. So our recommendation uh, it will be to again, consider the possibility of submitting a new request to the uh. To the use side program.
When are we going to do this?
As soon as possible, so. We have to bring this to you because most likely we might need a board pool on one item that is uh, connected to this, that is consulting services. Uh, for E rate and for the uh, Emergency Connectivity Fund.
We have a meeting between now and the fifteenth of.
On the tenth, yes.
Okay, so we do, so we can put it on the agenda and.
It's been added to the agenda.
Okay.
Yes. Question, what's the need for all this? We're going face to face. Why would any kid need anything at home for face to face?
Again?
Why would, why would we need this? We're going face to face.
Well, I think.
Yeah, because it's free money. I get it, but.
Texas is face to face. This is a federal program. Texas may not be face to face. Uh, soon and it could well. Be that uh. We just need to be prepared for that rather than scrambling at the last minute. It's question one. Secondly, there's still supplemental use. Of these devices, even if we are face to face.
Exactly. Sounds like a calculator.
Can you elaborate maybe if you've got any information out of my email today? About. Even, even if I, wha- what's on the table is there's, there's a bill out there that had not been voted on because there was no form. That would give districts the money to help supplement uh, remote learning. Is that correct? Bill sixteen to eight, I don't know, but.
Well, this money right here will supplement the he's talking about.
Face to face. So.
Remote learning, in other words.
But the email I sent to you is someone needed to qualify for a year that.
Oh, because of the rating?
Because of the rating.
Because of the rating. And this one is.
This one is not subject to this. This is subject to uh, social equalness. Uh, really have a high discount, so we have a very good chance of getting from the hundred percent rating, yes.
That's perfect, but I'm just wondering if, if we're not. We're currently not, we're currently face to face. And if anything happens, can we get funded by T E A considering our, our rate or district rate?
Funded for.
Health for remote learning.
For tech, technology?
Correct, or anything that's associated with remote learning. There is not the name in.
These are the only two programs that we do know and uh, and we're just scanning on over uh, for opportunities available so we can submit for uh. Funding other than the E rate, which has been uh. When the district has been submitted for a funding request on a annual basis.
So we're ready to go back to the vote. If maybe.
We would be better prepared than we were the first time.
Technologically, technologically wise, yes.
We don't need them.
But we're, hopefully we won't have to do that because the students really need that social care.
Okay, question. How many devices did we buy in two thousand twenty?
It was an estimated close to fifteen hundred devices, sir. And uh, we purchased uh. Uh, Lenovo devices and H P devices.
And so those would kind of become obsolete, would, would not.
No, they're still in work, so they are good to go and uh.
But the student wouldn't need to.
The students will not need to, but this will provide us with an opportunity to bring some of those same devices back to school and then we equip those safety cards.
We have some.
That now we have in the, in the campuses. We have no lack of equipment on school grounds.
When we're saying twenty seven hundred, I mean, that's kindergarten to twelve.
Yes, sir.
So you've got very, very young children. That, that devices are being provided for some households, maybe two, three different devices.
Yes.
What if a family doesn't want the device?
This is a voluntary basis, so definitely we have to go ahead and scrub our tables and look at the very details, the very specifics. So we designed a free survey that will allow us to go ahead and. Uh, look at our numbers again. The number two thousand seven hundred is very aggressive. The number might be different. Okay, uh, nonetheless, uh, we have a substantial number of students in the district that do not have devices upon and do not have.
Right, no, I understand that.
Well, is anybody true to true? Because we bought all those Lenovos.
Yes.
Because then you got, every kid had a device last year.
Every, but every kid has advice that requests a device, yes.
Every question.
Uh, we have also been getting some in. Very damaged.
Yes, there you go, that's.
Is anybody like we run by the pawn shops?
Find a cover there?
No, we, we did very careful because uh, um. Our uh, Kinsley Police Department, uh, Mr. uh, Rick Salinas uh. Collaborated with the district and uh, the uh, serial numbers for every single one of the uh, laptop devices. Was uploaded into the national registry system at every single pawn shop in the nation. So if any of these devices. It's under delivered to one of those shops, then they will not buy it, so there's none.
Okay, so we bought fifteen hundred, we distributed, so every kid had one last year. Now it's a year ago.
Yes, sir.
Now we're coming in with twenty seven hundred more.
That's an estimated number.
Look, we got a lot of computers. For forty, for twenty, you got twenty seven hundred kids?
Well, I would find excellent home, yeah, I would find excellent home if I saw somebody gets a snout burger and then.
I'm not, I'm not questioning it. I'm just saying, you know. We bought a lot and now we're buying almost double that amount this year. Using, I assume, does that fall under category of free money?
Yes.
That's free money, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take all the free money you got, that's fine. But. A lot of computers and. So we've got a plan for every computer and what it's going to be used for and. Makes us healthier, fatter and better.
No. Send the devices possibly back to the classrooms and as we trade the devices that are coming from this program, we retrieve the device that actually is districtalized and then. We equip those laptop cards for instruction.
Now, I want to deviate to what Ms. Ronalds was talking about in our rating. And she said, we're talking about our rating, we're talking about data integrity issues, that rating?
Yes.
The rating, the T E A refused to address after they came down and audited us. And we did the whole major mea culpa. That rating? And then they're turning around telling us that we can't. We don't qualify even after we, you know, exposed our soul and showed what we really would have been. I it. Those dirty dogs.
I mean, it's H V fourteen sixty eight. Would be given monies to um, T E A or to districts to help supplement uh, remote learning. But that bill failed the lack of form.
Okay, so how good of a grade do you have to have to get the state money? Get the state help?
So we have. We have a uh, financial integrity rating system on Texas for it and we, as a matter of fact, we just got our preliminary rating. For the um, nineteen twenty, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year uh, yesterday and it's preliminary in eighty eight, uh, B plus and.
Or that rate, not, not, not.
No, she told you that the academic one.
Oh, okay, oh, I see, our accountability, our accountability rating.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, this is accountability rating and a C or better.
A C or better, okay.
For remote learning.
Okay. I, I guess, you know, just that catch twenty two, we.
I'm just wondering if they were actually voting on.
Went to confession, we got absolution, but not officially.
We wouldn't even qualify because we're not even rating.
Okay.
I will have to look into that.
If they tested, I mean, like if they, if they sign them tomorrow and write on it and they pass it, we wouldn't even qualify because we're not even rating. And the bill there is going to be like a C, a C or something better.
Not at the high school, but every other campus would be. Dollar to the nearest.
No, she's talking about the district, district's like, not campus pay.
And I'm presum- presuming that their rationale is that. If your district is struggling academically, the kids need to be face to face.
Well, but, but in, in here's the deal, guys. This is, this is a simple hot potato right now. It is a bill that was introduced. It hadn't even made it to committee and so it, this bill being produced. In, in the House side, it's still going to have to go to the Senate side. There's going to be some compromises or there is room for change to this. And it could well be that when they do this, they're going to have to go across the board. It doesn't make sense to punish. The lower rated school districts who are probably going to. Be the, need more help and be the hardest hit by the need for more, more. Uh, so there's still, there's still a lot of wiggle out there.
It said that the Senate voted to approve it and the only stuff was left for the House to do the same before it went to the governor's desk. That was what's left on that bill. I'm just wondering, my fear is, is we got this budget going on and I just want to make sure that in my mind and that everybody knows that if we have to go lockdown again for whatever reason, you know. Bowl of ours breaks out, you know. You know, are we okay financially to shut down school?
Oh, that's why this is so important, is to have that surplus.
I'm just wondering, besides that, do we have anything else left to follow on our budget?
Well, I know in the S R we did put in technology.
Yes, we put for devices in the S R three grant, um, and we're working still putting the S R two grant together as well and then. We'll take a look at in just a minute what is in the general fund budget.
Well, my, my question is, is it said in there that it can be used for all different things to provide services? Not necessarily just laptops. Do we have other things that we need to purchase still?
These are the details and I'm reading uh, Gipsel Factor. So it's funding for Wi-Fi, hotspots, modems and routers, connected devices and advanced telecall and informational services for all campus connectivity. So it's down to the uh, device and the modem that makes the signal to the.
It's all students, okay.
So that we enhance this a little bit and we look at the list of those items that do qualify. To be paid by this program. And we talked about the idea of. Putting a device together with a built-in signal and the vendor said, that's a great idea, let's go ahead and. Bring in Lenovo and see if that is feasible and they said, yes, it will save you more money. So we're able to keep that. Price per device.
Now, following up with what you just asked on S R three, you said if you do have money for technology. Can we shift that money? To pay for other technology issues? That aren't on the student's side that are on the school's side?
Yeah, S R three, yes.
Okay.
We, we can do an amendment at any time, um.
Over the next three years.
Yes.
That's what I wanted, I want to make sure that this, this gives us money to spend elsewhere. Okay.
We ready to dive into the budget? All right.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, this is awesome.
Okay, um. The format of the budget, this is a budget starting September one, um, and it'll be ending August thirty first, two thousand twenty two. You look at the very top row and it shows the tax rate. So last year, our, our maintenance and operations tax rate was one point oh five three three. The reason why it's lower this year is the state sets your maximum M and O tax rate. Based on the change in your property values. When you have, when your property values go up, they say that um, they're still only going to. Demand the same level of local funding. So the tax rate to get that same level of local funding goes down. They're saying that we should be able to get the same amount of local tax. From one point oh two six five that we did from one point oh five three three last year. And they're going to pick up the difference. Now, the benefit to us is then what the board has had the foresight to do the last couple of years is whenever they compress that. Uh, on the M and O side, we've shifted the pennies over on the I N S side to keep the tax rate the same. And the reason we've had to do that is because. We have, we're going to take a look at our debt in just a minute, but we have fifty six point seven million dollars of debt in the district. And. We have had to in the past transfer money from our M and O budget to I N S to cover our debt. They have said, no more, we can't do that anymore, um, with uh. With um, them compressing on the M and O side, they say that you should be able to shift your pennies over and you should just be able to pay it on the I N S side. We're going to take a look at. How good we are um, in debt service with those extra pennies in a moment. But what the shows on the top line is our M and O tax rate, our I N S tax rate and our total tax rate will stay exactly the same. Now, as we look at reading this chart, we're going to look at three different budgets. These are the three that are required to go to the board. The general fund is the first column. Then the food service fund. And then finally, the debt service fund. The total is just a sum of all three together. So we'll start with the general fund, one nine nine. Our revenues, we're planning to get nine point three million and change in local revenues. The vast majority of that is property taxes. Our property taxes um, have gone up and we are projecting um, uh, again, higher local revenues from. Property taxes this year than we have in the past. Uh, we're also, another assumption that is here is ninety six percent collection rate. Last year, I, I projected only ninety two percent because I didn't know what was going to happen with COVID. But this year, we should be back to our historical average, which is close to ninety two, six percent. That's conservative. Sometimes it would've been ninety seven um, or ninety seven and a half percent. Other, yes, sir.
When we're talking about. The tax rates and the amount of local revenues that are going to be generated, are we using our numbers from our tax assessor? Or what the numbers that the comptroller keeps telling us they should be?
So for our budget purposes, we are using our numbers. Um, now, so what is, what the comptroller says affect, that affects. The state revenue that we're going to get, that basically decreases our state revenue because they say we should be collecting more on the other side, but we are using our numbers. Other things that are in here are, we get tuition from uh, any districts that we have a tuition agreement with. We have the one with Ricardo right now. We get uh, money from game revenues. Um, there's tickets for football games and other games and then. We also have interest. We put our money, we have some of our money. Just what we need and a little reserve in basically, I guess you would call it a, a checking account. Um, but then we have a lot of our money, most of it in a um, investment pool right now, tech school and loan star, so that we can get a higher interest rate on those. And we used to get uh, maybe twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year. Now we're, we're lucky to get two thousand. Um, the interest rates have really gone down.
Two thousand dollars on, I'll be the, well, investment?
So, um, let's say we have. At any one time, maybe fifteen to seventeen million dollars invested. And so the, the rate that we can get is anywhere from zero point. Zero one to zero point one percent. It is very low right now, the rates that we can get unfortunately. So we're not getting.
These bucks, they pay better.
You're, you're correct, right?
I, I, it's just, I mean, seventy million dollars and you're getting twenty thousand?
Right.
I think you could give me a better deal, can't you? Here's the problem.
It's got to be kept liquid. Because it's got to be moving in and out and in and out. And as you can see, that, that money we get in when taxes are collected. But then it's going to go out and in fact, if we have a budget deficit, even more of it's going to go out. So you can't, you, it, it's very hard to pick a period of time. You could perhaps. Maybe it's nine month C D, maybe a twelve, a, a six month C D. You can't get that to text pool necessarily. You could go to a financial institution and get that. But you've got the pledging requirements of municipalities, uh, 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 bonds and all, so it's a, it's a, it's a complicated issue. And if we had, you know, what we do have is whatever's in reserves. And, and if we can anticipate that those reserves are going to continue to be long term. There's a possibility of looking to, to, to get something else, but even, you know, nationally right now, interest rates are horrible.
They're horrible across the country. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the. Fund balance that the F projected for August thirty, twenty twenty two of five million one hundred eighty eight thousand. I never, I don't ever recall it being that low. So it tells me five million ought to be the safety level. So I think on five million bucks, you ought to be able to get more than seventeen thousand dollars.
There, there are other investments we can look at. We have had CDs at one time in our district, um. Uh, Mr. Group. Um, uh, Mr. Kufal brought up the point that uh, some of your money, you need liquid. And, and from, at any time, it, like we, from maybe two point five million dollars to four million dollars a month, we need to keep liquid no matter what, just to pay salaries to pay our, our vendors as well too.
This is, I'm not, one question is, you said there's seventeen million dollars in tech school. And, you know, we're getting point oh oh one, which is like one thousand to forty percent interest on that money. And I'm looking at a reserve fund that's never gone below five million, to my knowledge. Or maybe, I don't know, I mean, but usually that's a good, that's a good basic barrier to say, okay, we're not gonna dip below five million.
So your thought is that money could be in another investment that doesn't need to be kept as liquid and, and make a higher interest rate?
It should be at a government, a government bond fund to get two and a half, three percent.
Right, it does need to be something very safe, and that's something that we can look into and and bring to you in the fall of other investment options, so.
Okay, I just.
Right.
That strikes me as really low.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we'll, we'll refine, that's a bond for a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings over a twenty year period. This, okay, sorry, just kinda caught, caught my attention there, Mr. Pitts.
No, that, that's something that we have looked at as well ever since, uh, interest rates dipped so low, and, and we will, we'll bring some options to you. Uh, so state program revenue, that's, uh, that is based, the assumption there is twenty six hundred kids. If we get twenty six hundred kids in the special ed, uh, A D and C T E A D A that we are projecting, we will get eighteen point one million from them, so. Uh, that's a little bit of a variable again, every year at the end of the year, they do a settle up. So we may not get eighteen point one million, that again, the thing to keep in mind as we're going through the year is this is something that we can keep a pulse on. At the end of the first six weeks, we can see, is our A D A over twenty six hundred or under twenty six hundred, or is it right there? And then we won't be, uh, at least we'll have a heads up when we can come, prepare what we're gonna have to do for the settle up. Um, but I tried to come with a very conservative number in our, uh, in our, I guess, our assumptions, which was twenty six hundred A D A. Um, and then one point two million dollars, that is, uh, reimbursements from SHARs, reimbursements from R O T C from uh, from also, uh, E rate as well too. Um, so there's some federal funding, so we're projecting twenty eight point seven million dollars in revenues this year.
When, when we've got that revenue, those two revenue amount, uh, the ninety five thousand and two hundred and forty nine for the state and the federal allocated to the debt service, is that something we have chosen to put there to supplement the budget, or are those funds earmarked for debt service specifically coming from these programs?
All of that money is earmarked for debt service. We're gone are the days where we are taking anything from the general fund and earmarking it for debt service. Um, so looking at the general fund expenditures, um, let's, we're gonna take a look at the functions, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit about each one of them. Instruction is our biggest function, and mainly instruction is anything for teachers or students. Biggest part of most of these functions is salaries, teacher salaries, um, instructional aid salaries. Um, also included in there are any techno- technological resources such as software, um, or, um, uh, or any other instructional resources. The exception this year is we have taken quite a bit of our instruction that qualifies, uh, for learning loss, and we have removed it from that function and put it in S R three. So you will actually see a decrease in this function this year for two reasons. One, a lot of those costs have been moved to S R three, and two, we now have, uh, we have a attrition, we have less teaching salaries, less aid salaries through attrition. If you look at uh, function twelve, technology, instructional resource and media service, that comprises two things. One, technology that is not instructional, first, for instance, um, district infrastructure as far as technology, district software programs like Excel and Adobe. Um, and also it is our library as well, that's considered instructional resources as well too. So, uh, library aids and library and salaries come out of there as well as library books too. So that's what comprises that function.
If we could go back one quick, quickly to, to eleven. When we're looking at this, which gives us last year's balance versus this year's.
Yes.
This year's balance, we've got fifteen thousand over there, this aggregate expenditures. It's really more than that because there is some S R money.
Exactly.
And the whole point being, I don't want someone to pick this up and say, my God, look at your per pupil.
Right.
Sixty one down to fifty two, but really there is more money being spent there. It's just not coming through our budget.
Exactly, and we're gonna take a look at the comparison between last year and this year in just a moment after we get through this budget, but and it, that's exactly right, Mr. Kufal. We don't want to spend the message that we're not spending enough on instruction with students. It's just that now S R three is paying for that, a lot of that instruction.
Exactly. But the envelope runs out in three years.
And we got three years to get our act together.
So it may be actually maybe spending more, but we don't see it in the checkbook because the check comes. But three years, the check's gonna stop coming. So are we just going past the graveyard here?
No, part of the, part of the purpose for S R three is they knew that all districts were hit hard with COVID, and we, we had ran up a big deficit by buying devices right before, and so part of this is to get our reserves back up by taking some of those expenses so that we can get our fund balance of what we need to. And then, uh, again, we're working in, what we did with, um, the two campuses that we did with realignment is try to start getting on a path where we are financially, uh, balancing the number of students with the number of staff and the number of facilities.
Great, but in this first year that I'm looking at, it's coming up zero. We didn't, we're actually increasing the fund balance a ten. I, I buy this.
So that's a good point.
If I'm not, I'm misinterpreting this, just tell me, I wanna know where I'm at, at, after year one of S R. Because now, next year, we're gonna have to check for two more years.
So.
So when are we gonna start growing fund balance, I guess is my question.
Well, what hasn't been, uh, taken out of the fund balance yet is a lot of S R two. So we're hoping to use a lot of S R two to supplement some of the items that are built in here. Um, the problem just is that this general fund budget needs to be submitted before S R two needs to be submitted.
I'm just looking at wrong numbers, and, 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 you know, country boy math tells me that, you know, you might get this prop in, but.
You know, and, and interestingly, historically, and for years, we have adopted deficit budgets, which has never materialized. I mean, we'll adopt a budget that's, that shows a million dollar deficit or two million. I had to go on TV one time and explain that we adopted a budget that was two million dollars, and we ended the year a million in the red.
Right.
And, 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 I mean, this is such a crash shoot when you're, when you're putting this together.
Appreciate the fact that you global everything.
Yeah, I, I always budget conservatively because it, so, yes, like you always ask me, Colonel Kreitz, is this worst case scenario? And yes, this is worst case scenario. So we very well could, even without S R two, end up a million dollars to the good.
Um, I, again, I'm, I'm not meaning to pick and be critical, it's just that that's my job. Now, I wanna bring up between, there's Dr., uh, Frank Kufal and Colonel Kreitz. They both brought up objects, but under Pettis has reduced the amount of money that we spent everywhere. And so my question is now, if we were, like you were saying, it, it never, it never gels that we spent that much money, but now we can reduce the amount of money that we're spending, do we have any more places that we can continue to reduce that money?
Then.
To make, to make deposits.
So the biggest pain for your budget you're gonna get is always with salaries and medicines. So in, in order to be, um, financially, uh, fiscally, I'm looking for the word, to break even. Fiscally responsible, yeah, I guess so. In, in order to break even, you need to make sure you balance the number of students with the number of staff and the number of facilities, because those are your biggest costs, your, your payroll, and also your utilities and maintenance and upkeep of the building. So that's what we're working at doing. We've taken a, a big step this last year with the realignment of the schools. Um, again, if we get more students, we get more money, and then we can, again, afford a bigger payroll, we can afford new facilities. But right now, that, that has been a problem for quite a while, where we probably kept more, more staff, and we've kept more facilities when we've declined with our students. And again, with Dr. Pettis and the rest of the leadership team, we have pinpointed that issue, and we've taken a big step to solving that this year.
Back up to your state revenue, that is based, your computations are based on this revised twenty five hundred as opposed to the thirty one hundred from a couple of years ago.
It, twenty six hundred is the assumption for these calculations.
So, which we hope is extremely conservative.
Yes, we're, we're hoping to do better than that for our A D A, so, and again, that eighteen point one could be more than that. So if we have more kids next year, then already we're gonna, we're gonna be into the good.
It's not only enrollment, it's.
A D A.
Yeah.
It's A D A, yes. So we gotta get our kids to school. And again, right now, the, the state does not have a plan to fund anything for remote attendance, whereas last year they did. So we gotta make sure our kids get in school, and it's it's, uh, it's a scary thing, and I know for a lot of parents to, to, um, send their kids back, but, um, again, it's, it's proven that, um, they're gonna achieve more academically when they're face to face.
Okay, so, so if I don't send my kid to school, you guys don't think it's A D A, very, it's like, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Uh, let's take a look at.
Actually, not us guys, we guys, we don't get the.
But when I look back at that question, because it's a good question, but what does your kid not get? Doesn't get educated, doesn't get educated unless you're gonna do homeschool.
And, and what, the other thing that you gotta get is that our expenditures are not gonna go down, somebody's gotta pay it. So school doesn't get the A D A, your kid doesn't go to school, but the taxpayers get to get their taxes increased the next year to make up for the deficits that we didn't get made.
I mean, there's a price of individual freedom, that is, you gotta pay for it. And that's, that's, and that's the message I think we gotta try to get out the folks, you know, it's
Yeah.
You wanna beat your chest and say, it's my right, well, yeah, it is.
And there's also the fact, I just had a student that, that reduced this, Kingsville is shrinking. We, we reduced the population of Kingsville, shrunk by point zero two, two percent or something, it was six whole people in a year.
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting.
But there's six people less in Kingsville than there was last year. So that means that our student, the population keeps drawing, it's getting smaller, so we need, we need to address this more.
And of course, we also have to fight against the other districts that are in our area for students. Um, but I think with the, the great things that we're doing with K I S D and the great partnerships that we have, we, um, Dr. Pettis has already shared the students that are coming back to our district, so that's, that's only gonna help us.
My point is that we should be hoping like the Pettis. You know, you don't help the other team, you don't fumble the ball on the five yard line. So to the extent that we can be, this is the word I'm looking for, isolationist in that respect, I think is probably a good move on our part. And again.
It's also good to be neighborly. And I'm seeing that, just with the influx of some of these students we've been getting, just within the past three days, it's, it's beautiful to see some of that. Because of some partnerships we've had, so.
It's neighborly when they come to us, it's not neighborly when they leave us.
No, it's not.
Just, just make sure we understand the definition of neighborly.
That's not, I'm saying, we can be neighborly.
Um, what's community services by thousand? What is that, what is that?
Well, community services is it's parent involvement. Um, and, um, most of parent involvement is paid out of Title One. But there are certain things like on behalf that have to come from their salaries that the district has to pay out of the general fund. So it's, it's a very small amount, but it's mainly parent involvement, uh, of, of benefit that has to be paid out of Title One. I mean, out of local, and most of the salaries out of Title One. Um, let me jump back to function thirteen, and I'll kinda run down the list really quickly. So function thirteen is professional development. There's not a lot in there, because we're planning to take a lot of our professional development either out of S R three or out of, uh, Title Two. So we don't see too much built into the general fund there. Um, function twenty one, instructional leadership, that's, that's basically, um, central office administrators that are involved in instruction and all of the materials that we purchased for campuses um, on behalf of the campuses, so there's a lot of district initiatives that go through, uh, that function. Not only salaries, but a lot of instructional technology and district initiatives. Uh, twenty three, school leadership, that is, um, campus, uh, administrators. Um, and it is everything that is bought by the front office staff as well too. So it, not only is it campus administrators, secretaries, all their salaries come out of that, but anything that is bought for their offices also comes out of that function there as well too.
Um, does that, does that include, uh, nursing?
No, they have their own separate function in thirty three.
Is there a portion of that that is discretionary for the campus?
Yes, um, so campuses get their own budget, and it's based on their, how many students they have. And they get a portion that they can use for instruction, so many dollars per student, it's actually seventy dollars per student. Uh, seven dollars per student as far as for the library. Um, we, twelve dollars per student for administrative purposes, and then, uh, a dollar a student for the counselors. Okay, because a lot of the other counselor budget comes out of, uh, the administrative budget as well too. They don't have a very big, uh, need, because most of that is need for district wide. So speaking of that, thirty one thousand, thirty, function thirty one is counselors, and that one is a big, uh, decrease from last year. The reason why is a lot of now what is considered counseling is coming out of S R three. Um, that aligns exactly with S R three with helping the students not only academically, but, uh, social emotionally as well too. So counselor salary is coming out of S R three, and a lot of the, um, materials and supplies now are definitely coming out of S R three.
That's coming back in two years, all right?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's. Nobody else is paying the bill now, but it's gonna become our bill.
Right.
I hear you.
All right.
Uh, social work services, most of that, um, is, uh, in the past, you've seen well over a hundred thousand for that function. The biggest majority of that is communities and schools, which now again also aligns with S R three, so that is paid out of, um, will be paid out S R three. So as, uh, Mr. Kufal pointed out earlier, when we look at last year compared to this year, really what we're putting is the budget that we are paying for, not, uh, including all the extra grants. That's what gets posted, and only the general fund and the food service and the debt service fund are what's, what's posted.
And for our purposes, S R three is about three million a year?
It's, so it's a, a eleven point one million total, probably about three, a little over three, three point two billion a year. Um, then there's also some indirect costs associated with that as well.
So one billion divided by three, that's like three point six million.
Correct, but there is some indirect cost in there as well too that are re- to the district, to the general fund that we're not, um, we're not including in that.
So the.
Make sure you weren't planning a retirement fund.
No, sir.
At, at Horace, Colonel, it's about a three point three point six million a year, in three years. That we're gonna either have to say that was temporary expense and it goes away, or we've got to be able to replace.
How much, and, and this is off the, off the, how much of, let's say, this year's S R money that we're using the first year of S R three?
How much is that temporary?
And we, we have identified, this is temporary. This is good for the next three, but, you know, we're not gonna be looking at this three years from now. Have we ever actually looked at it in that term, or?
It's three, three, three point some odd million coming up. It's not this year.
No, no, I mean, this, this coming, so this budget, this budget here.
I hear your question. That's something that we, to get a more accurate number, we're probably gonna need to get back to you on, but I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Um, so you're wondering out of that three point two million dollars a year, how much of that is extra things? And there, and there are several extra things to address the learning loss right now. And how much, like, right away, what can I tell you for sure? I can tell you that we, we have four hundred thousand dollars to help, you know, for utilities that are um, a year. Uh, we definitely have about five hundred thousand dollars of salaries a year that we try to use. And we've also, um, we also have money for technology for devices.
Those aren't going away.
He's talking about the money going away.
Correct, so, but a lot of the rest besides that will, I, I mean, that, that's when administration will have to take a look and see. This is what we have for available, this we can continue, this we cannot continue.
It's kind of like what we did this year. I mean, we were at a four point five million deficit. We cut it down, we reduced it three point two million. We did it this year in a pandemic and with no extra money. So I, I have confidence that. I have confidence that if we continue with the thinking and the systems that we've got in place, that we should be okay.
Again, I, I think the, I keep going back to this, the, the biggest expense for the district is people. And if we get the number of people and facilities in line with the number of students, we will be able to balance the budget.
Do you think it'd be beneficiary for the K I S D to have a grant writer again?
The, the issue with the grant writer is that if we ever had a grant writer, I would recommend that they be an employee of K I S D. Um, for a couple of reasons. Uh, number one, it's, it's, you have to work hand in hand and actually be in all the meetings to write the grant. Other than that, um, there has to be a lot of like work that's done outside to communicate what we're doing in-house with the grant writer. And then number two, uh, I think that if you, if you have them on payroll, you have them as a full-time position, eight hours a day for however long their contract is. And I think you're gonna get more bang for your buck that way.
It has to be somebody that's current in everything that's happening and things are happening so quickly. That if it's an outside person, you're almost having to tell them what to write. And all they're really doing is, you know, if, yeah, yes, it's more, it's double work.
Again, I was intimately involved in, in that process this year and it was a lot of extra work to communicate inside and outside.
Do you think it's good to give another one? And not right now, not this year.
Well, not right now. Here's the reason why not right now. E- every grant you write has, uh, it, it gives you usually funding. Or sometimes it's not funding, it's just services. But there's a lot of extra work that has to be done on the um, on the other side. For instance, the R S S B, that was a grant we applied for. And again, it is providing a lot of benefit, but it takes a lot of time. So there are only so many grants that you can implement with fidelity. Um, once you start just applying for everything under the sun, there's no way that you can really keep up and do a good job of what that meant, grant is meant to do. Because you only have so many people um, that can be stretched so thin. Because it is, it's a lot of work to apply for a grant and then not only that, to implement a grant after that. And you wanna make sure that the grants that you choose are handpicked to number one, align with district initiatives. And number two, to get the greatest bang for the buck. You don't want a grant that is gonna require a thousand hours of work for fifty thousand dollars when you could have another grant that's gonna be fifty hours of work. And you're gonna get two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So all of those, all of those things need to be weighed. And right now, we, we have several grants that we're working to try to implement with fidelity. I would say not at this time.
And we do, we do look at it like just yesterday during our leadership meeting, looking at the ones like the P Tech and the Grow Your Own, that we're looking at. And the library grant and the nurses grant, there are all these grants that are available to us. And, but we have to look to see, okay, we can't bite off more than we can chew right now. And we've got to be very strategic about what we are selecting to apply for. And it's in line with everything that we've been talking about that we wanna implement. Um, I think a lot of districts get lost in all the millions of grants that they apply for and then, you know, they're losing people and they're just, they're not implementing it correctly. They're not in compliance and then they get in trouble.
When you think of grant writer, what, what do you, what do you envision? Is that an assistant principal level type position? Is that a director type of position?
I really would.
You're envisioning one, unlimited money, you know?
I would prefer, if I had a priority, I'd rather use that position on something else.
Okay.
At this point, at this point, because, you know, I'd rather have another, I don't know, special.
Last year, that was a board driven thing. That wasn't a superintendent driven thing. That was a board driven thing.
Okay, then, can we?
Yeah, so moving on to, so we left off at social work services. Um, the next one is health services. So that uh, includes not only the, the salaries of all our nurses, our, our RNs and our CNAs. But also um, the, all of the supplies that are needed for health services as well. Uh, transportation, big part of them is salaries, but also another big part of that is fuel. And another big part of that is maintenance of the buses.
And what, what code on transportation?
Thirty-four. Um. Uh, thirty-five, we'll skip for now until we get to the food service budget.
Transportation.
Yes.
Thirty-four. We're spending more this year on transportation than last year on transportation, but we've got two less campuses?
That's true, but remember that almost half of our kids weren't face to face, so we weren't busing nearly as many students.
But the bus still ran the same number of routes.
Well, we didn't have as many stops all along those routes.
But the bus was still running the same number of routes, whether it has twenty stops or fifteen stops, you still had to, you still had to run them. You still left the barn, is my question. Is, I'm finding that to be a pretty big increase. That's one of the few areas where we're actually spending more this year than we did last year per student, you know, per student. So I, I get that, but why would the cost go up?
Well.
That's almost a twelve percent increase.
Yes, um, what we're trying to also build in there is just in case we need another vehicle as well too. So we're putting that in the budget, but also again.
We're putting it in the budget. The buy and less fun?
Or lease, I mean, it just depends.
We, we don't, we're, we're gonna bring something to you as far as vehicles with leasing slash um, buying new vehicles. But right now, we've, we've tried to add also something to maintenance for light fleet vehicles as well too. But in the budget for, um, so there's, there's a couple of things besides the um, besides just the salary. So the salary is increased, um, for all employees. So the function is gonna go up just because of that. But again, we're projecting that with more students, we're gonna need more bus repairs as well too. And it's gonna be more miles because there's more stops.
You have more, you have, you know, salaries went up for teachers, but instruction did go up.
Right, but a lot of that is in S R three.
Essentially, the bulk of that should be on learning loss.
There's only a couple areas where we're spending more per student and per category than we did last year. One of them is transportation, the other one is uh, general adminis, is uh, is this.
I understand we're, we're coming back face to face and I'd rather be conservative and, and plan just in case. Um, thirty-six, extracurricular activities. We are, uh, we did not do as much travel as we do in a normal year. We are projecting more travel than we did last year. So what comes out of that budget? There's very few salaries that comes out of that, just mainly the athletic director and the um, uh, the, the office staff there with the athletic director. But also all the athletic stipends comes out of that function. And then all the travel comes out of that function, all of the uniforms and um, even meals when they go to games. So there is a lot that comes out of that function.
Um, it went down. It went down.
That went down.
Is there any S R money being applied there?
No, there is no S R money being applied there.
So you see where the.
So was there plus before or?
Well, we, we tried to, uh, last year there were funds that were not used. And again, we did take into account that there, it was a, a year where there wasn't as much travel. But um, uh, our thought is that, looking at historical trends of what's been spent, our thought is that's what is needed this year.
All right. When we're looking at these numbers on the yellow side of the page.
Yes.
Actual budget from last year.
That's not what was spent. That was the actual.
And so the four million dollars in savings or whatever it is, it has not been adjusted for here. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So we, we may have only spent eight hundred thousand.
Correct.
We may have budgeted a million three. And so there's a missing number here. But those numbers aren't available yet. I got it. I, I understand. Okay. So even though we budgeted a million three last year, we're budgeting a million one one three. And that's and probably an increase over what was actually spent.
Yes.
In this last year. Got it.
Uh, general administration, um, that includes several things. There, there's a couple of big things that are in there. One is we have to pay the appraisal district every year. So to appraise, uh, again, all of the property that's in our uh, zone that collects taxes. So three hundred seventeen thousand dollars um, is what we're paying the appraisal district next year. Uh, it was, I believe, two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, so they went up quite a bit. Um, election cost, that comes out of there. So a lot of things that you wouldn't think of as administration, it's just kind of almost a catch-all if it doesn't fit in any other function. If it's something that is directed by the central office, um, it is put in administration. So it's again, not just salaries, not just supplies that are bought, but kind of miscellaneous of all of those other things that don't fit anywhere else.
Now.
Salaries out of this building.
Salaries out of this building are there and, and with the exception. I'm sorry?
They're under forty-one?
They are under forty-one with the exception of a few salaries that are instructional leadership that are in twenty-one.
Okay. That's principles.
So how many salaries come out of that one?
Out of, out of which one? Out of forty-one? Well, the majority in this building, so. Um.
About forty-five, six, about forty-five, forty-five employees?
Instructional leadership with principles, right?
No, instructional leadership are like.
They, they are instructional directors.
Right, instructional directors, assistant superintendent of C N I. If it's an administrator in this building that is related toward instruction, it's twenty-one. If, if they're on a campus, it's twenty-three.
Okay, so like, should we be twenty-one?
Yes, yes.
So it's forty-three, you said? It's asked about custodians, everybody that's here, uh, secretaries, everybody.
Well, custodians and auxiliary employees are out of a different budget. We're talking everybody else, basically, secretaries, clerks, everybody else out of this building. But uh, cust- custodians will come out of fifty-one. Correct, with, with the exception of C N I, correct. Okay, so fifty-one is basically all the auxiliary employees. So we are talking custodians, we are talking maintenance staff as well. Um, they all come out of fifty-one, so all the salaries for all those employees. But then also we are talking utilities come out of function of fifty-one. And again, that's, that's over a million dollars in utilities every year. And then we're also talking all the building supplies that are needed, all the repairs that are needed for all the buildings like HVAC. The roofing, all of that comes out of that function.
The two hundred thousand of that is S R electricity.
Four hundred thousand, right, that I did not build into the budget this year that I normally would have, correct?
So that would have been five million on the.
Pretty close, yes.
Blue slide, okay.
So.
Those as budget and all the things we talked about. To expect of our last paper?
No, uh. S R three, you're talking about the S R three budget that we talked about, that funding is completely separate. That's, that's a grant. Um. Oh, all the roofing. So we did put in there, uh, well, we put in two hundred thousand dollars for roofing. We don't know how much we're gonna need, but right now we put in two hundred thousand dollars to get all the warranties back, like the several million dollars to get the warranties back. No, there's no way we can fit that into the budget right now. Well, what we're looking at is stopping the leaks right now. That's our first priority. And then we're gonna, we're gonna look at a long-term solution for how we're going to maintain our roofs. Um, function fifty-two, security, we have a few uh, people's salaries that are considered um, uh, security on campus. We uh, uh, data processing is a big one. That is basically all the software that is used to run our district. And again, now that also includes the software for online registration as well too. Um, we already talked about community services. Again, that's just a small amount that we have to pay um, for benefits for the Title One salaries um, for parent involvement.
Let's go, let's go back to data, data process.
Okay.
Uh, thirty-three percent increase.
Yes, so we have to do some upgrades and uh, this year we spent more than we had allocated for last year. So um, we are needing to adjust the budget according, according to our expenditures.
All right.
Um, debt service, so there was a, I guess you would call it a loan that was taken out thirteen years ago. When they upgraded all our HVAC equipment. And that loan had a guarantee to pay for, uh, that the reduction in utility costs was going to be for the premium. For the, the, the payment for the loan every year. So we have still have two more years left on that, that loan that we took out for new HVAC equipment. So we have to pay that again every year. That's, that's been the amount that we've had to pay for the last thirteen years and we have two more years left on that. We are also looking at upbringing in the fall, a, another similar option. It's, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend an energy audit where they look at all our facilities and let us know what needs to be upgraded. And then they offer us a similar package where, at no cost to us, they're going to give us a loan to upgrade all our HVAC equipment. We would pay it over the next ten to fifteen years. And then we would be guaranteed that if for some reason the reduction in utility costs doesn't cover that loan payment, that they would kick in the difference. So we're gonna. Well, they, they take a look at, um, basically temperature. They, they look at the temperature, the historical temperature and then what your utility costs were on similar days that had similar temperatures. But, but that's basically how they do it. You're right, it's, it's so hard to show that it's savings, but they look at basically temperature.
I have a feeling if we checked into it, they haven't made a lot of payments on.
No, they, they haven't made uh, any payments, actually.
Right, which is, on your white sheet, it shows debt service four seven two four.
So.
Or nine, and on the blue sheet, blue yellow sheet, it shows. Four eight, what is it? Four eight nine three nine hundred. I mean, it's not a big difference, but why the difference?
That includes the four seven two four and also the one six nine together, includes both of those numbers together. And uh, there is, so.
The one six nine, where, where's that at?
Okay, the one six nine's right here in function seven one. I, I can already tell you that um, there is a mistake right here that.
This blown number to five million.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, so that is gonna be fixed. That, that's gonna be the sum of those two numbers right there.
So this HVAC, that's not the four million dollars. That, that's everything, right? The four million, I mean.
No, the HVAC was a one sixty-nine.
Then, then what we're paying every year for the HVAC loan that we took out thirteen years ago is a hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. So that's considered part of our maintenance and operation budget. The other one's the debt service budget, which is all the bonds that we have.
And that's an annual payment on a total of, you said what, about fifty-six million, fifty-seven million?
Well, this is an annual payment on, we're gonna take a look at the debt, but that includes the fifty-six million, but also twenty some odd million in interest that we're gonna have to pay over the years as well too. So it's closer to eighty-four million, I think, but we're gonna look at debt service in just a moment. Uh, okay, so payments to um, fiscal agent. Uh, we, we contract with C C I S D to send uh, one or more students there every year for Corpus Christi School for the Blind and Deaf. So that is our payment to them. Um, we're estimating again eighteen thousand in the range there for that next year again. Again, I, I try to always be conservative and just make sure that I have a little bit of leeway in case they pre-increase their prices.
Is that a per student fee or is there a flat fee that we pay annually to be a part of the co-op or whatever?
Dr. Besson, I S D, you haven't answered that question? Oh, uh, the question is, um, the fee that we pay to Corpus Christi I S D for Texas School for the, the Blind and Deaf, how is that fee calculated? Is that based on the number of students that we have and the services that those students receive? Or is it a flat rate that we pay them just to be a part of that?
It's a combination of both. Okay, the next meeting, they will propose to each district what, uh, the estimated cost is depending on how those students are serviced and travel and so forth. But they do provide, you know, all the services that the students hear and things they'll need, uh, to be serviced through them.
Okay, so as you see, the total expenditures, twenty-eight point seven million exactly match uh, the revenues. Again, we budgeted conservatively, so we do expect to, uh, to have a, a surplus and hopefully build our fund balance back. Uh, you see that zero dollars, uh, estimated, uh, revenues over expenditures. Um, you see the fund balance estimated starting September, the first. Again, we had told you earlier, we're, our best estimate is between seven hundred fifty thousand and not one point three million at the end of the year. What I did for that, um, number right there is I split the difference. That's a million dollars. Right now, the fund balance, the previous year was six million one hundred eighty-eight thousand. If we had a one million dollar deficit, we would be at five million one hundred eighty-eight thousand. Again, this is right now our best estimate of where we will be at the beginning of the year. Um, and then again, our fund balance wouldn't change. Again, this is worst-case scenario. This is, uh, we should hopefully end, be better than that. What do we need to have to have ninety days of operating revenue? Seven point four million.
We're under.
We're under right now. And, and again, when you see our first rating, uh, that we're gonna, that we're, we're gonna bring the first, the preliminary first rating to the board meeting next, uh, next Tuesday. We just got the preliminary ratings yesterday, so we didn't get it on the agenda in time, but we're gonna bring that and talk a little bit about it, uh, next Tuesday. And then we have to eventually have a public meeting um, about it as soon as we, in early November, when we get the final ratings, then we'll have to schedule a public meeting.
Seven point four is ninety days, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're two point two under?
Correct. And again, that's, that's just our best estimate where we're gonna start right now. But, but yeah, so we would need to build one point one million back each year to be at that seven point four in the next two years. And we think we can do that. And that would even give us one more year of S R three after that, um, to give us a little bit of a cushion.
Maybe one more year. If you, this, year one, we're, is this one. Year one is a balanced budget. That doesn't help us or hurt us. So we have two years to build the.
But hopefully we'll be able to make some of that two point two million up this year with, with our conservative budgeting. And, and, and we're going to try to absorb some in S R two as well.
Hey, you're just, you're just a target downrange. You're the only guy I gotta shoot at right now. I mean, this, I mean, I'm not, this would be great. I mean, it's just hard questions because we gotta make hard, hard calls. Okay, cool, go.
I've, I've worked in the health industry for a long while, correct? Um, and I, I, I got my counselor every day. He's got his needs with the nurses. Um, do the nurses get any kind of stipends as yet with all their homework?
No, we don't have a nursing stipend, um, on the stipends that we brought to you that were approved by the board.
I, I'm just wondering if there's any way, since you're being so conservative on all these figures, that we could do something for these nurses such as clothe them in appropriate uniforms and shoes. And I say shoes because they're expensive. Um, the type of shoes needed in the medical field are something that are easily to wipe off, easy to spray sanitation spray on and easy to wash. Um, I normally use Gray's Anatomy. Um, those uniforms are seventy-one bucks a pop. I would really like to see the nurses be clothed every single day, five days a week, be able to watch them on the weekends and have an extra pair just in case they need to change.
As a matter of fact, today, we just.
We, we have, we have built in, uh, nursing uniforms into the budget uh, based on projections by our charge nurse. So the, the, uh, the restriction you always have in uniforms for staff is you can, they cannot keep them. They are not theirs. They are the district's property because we can't give public funds away. They can only wear them for work. They have to return them at the end of the year. But we have built that into the budget this year based on recommendations from our charge nurse.
So does she recommend about seven thousand dollars worth?
Uh, no, she did not.
Cause my calculations, in order to buy uniforms not from Walmart, those are the costs. How many nurses do we have? Seven, eight?
Well, we have one nurse per campus plus a charge nurse as well, too. So we have.
I'm looking at seven. Is there any way to be, be a little bit, I don't know how much you guys are giving.
That, that is something that, uh, we can look at and consider putting into the budget and increasing that a lot, that we'll look at that.
I just, I just hope they get nice uniforms, not, not dicky's that don't breathe. These, these uniforms are made for specific reasons. And I hope that they are able to afford that and, and the shoes, because they're like a hundred thirty bucks a pop.
When we talk about fund balance, why are we focused on column one instead of column four?
Well, because the, the money is not interchangeable between the columns. Um, each, each really one stands on its own. We, you can't, uh, move from debt service to the general fund. You can't move from food service to the general fund. If you had to, you can move from the general fund to either of the other two. But general fund really stands on its own. There's really nothing else that can be used to support that fund balance in the general fund.
So wha- what do you do with the food service surplus? What do you do with the debt service surplus?
Well, we're not gonna have a, a debt service surplus, but, but let's talk about the food service surplus. Just like with the, um, general fund, you're supposed to have ninety days of operating funds. With food for service, you're not supposed to have ninety, more than ninety days of operating funds in your fund balance because they give you what you need. So whenever you have more than that, the food service department has to submit a plan of how they're going to spend that money, whether it be extra equipment or whether it be, um, uh, increased food options. Uh, so that is something that we're, we're gonna have to put together a plan to do. And again, we'll do that in conjunction with the food service director.
Quick question. Million five, maybe it's bigger every year. So Ray, can you give us on a million bucks, Mr. Kufal? I mean, I mean, I might have all this money sitting there. I mean, if we're not gonna spend it, I bet you, I'm sure they're gonna come in and say, too much. Or start serving lobster, one of the other.
Well, well, the, so the food service budget, we have had, we, we, uh, historically, we have run a surplus in there. So we've had to submit a plan to, uh, get rid of that fund balance. Now, granted, we used to have a higher fund balance two years ago. Covid, the last two years, we run a deficit because you're only paid based on meals served. So our fund balance has taken a hit in the last couple of years. But again, we do expect to, um, with the food service director, to maybe even increase the budget sometime this year, as long as we are sure that those revenues are actually realized. We're, we're waiting a little bit now just to make sure that the meal served is gonna provide the revenue that we're hoping for, that we're projecting at the top of the three point.
A million five, how many, like, how many operating days is that?
Well, so, uh, let's say their, their budget in the past, their expenditures in the past, if it, let's round it off and make it really easy. In the past, their operating budget or expenditures has been about three million. So you take three million and basically divide it by four, so you're looking at seven hundred fifty thousand. Yeah, by four, because you have twelve months in the year. So if you, you're saying three months, ninety days, there's, uh, four, three month.
Okay.
So seven hundred fifty thousand. Right.
We got a million and a half. That's almost an eighty-day level. It's supposed to, it's not supposed to be over a ninety day. So if ninety, seven fifty, then you'd have, you're right, a hundred and eighty.
Right, she's gonna have, right, right, exactly. So right now, you know, we're pretty, we're pretty good where we need to be. But yeah, that extra revenue issue is gonna have to be.
But then you back to the nurses, but then we're going by what our charge nurse has recommended. She knows, I mean, she's talking about the breathable uniforms and all of that.
I don't know if she's being conservative. I don't know her numbers. But for, for nice ones that last all year long, that easily wash full, that's easily sanitized and shoes that are comfortable, that are easy to sanitize, Gray's Anatomy is your average size brand. And to do what, seven or eight? I don't know how many nurses we have, eight?
Cause we had seven plus.
At the maximum level, if you're gonna go with, I'd say almost seven thousand dollars.
Well, I don't know the exact amount, but I do know that they've already met, they've already decided which ones they wanted, even according to what Nurse Lou.
I just, I just want to see them not wear those Walmart things, like grand jerseys when I go out to the city, a Walmart stub. And I'm like, I know there's stuff running there. And they, they've gone through a lot in the last year and a half, but I figured we're not, if you guys can do it.
Okay, so, um, the food service, again, we're projecting a, uh, surplus in the food service budget. Let's look at debt service. So debt service, we get the majority of our debt service from property taxes. Property taxes have an M and O component, one point oh two six five, uh, per one hundred dollar valuation. And the debt service, point four nine two four for a hundred dollar valuation. Um, in the past, we got over two million dollars from the state for revenue, um, for our INS. Uh, but then with House Bill three, they cut that way down. They said, what we're gonna do is we're gonna cut down your M and O rate. We're gonna pay more on that side. You're expected to cover your INS. So again, the board has shifted over those pennies to the INS, uh, to make sure that we cover our debt service. Uh, nine, so ninety-five thousand is about all we might get from the state this next year. Uh, the two hundred forty-nine thousand is a federal subsidy that we're getting, uh, based on, uh, there was a program, I forget which president it was under, maybe it was Obama, that um, during that time, if we took out any type of bond, we would get some type of federal subsidy for that, that particular, uh, serious bond that we got. So we get a federal subsidy every year. So you see, we're projecting four point six eight million dollars in revenues. We're projecting four point seven million, two four million in expenditures, a deficit of forty thousand. Um, so our fund balance, uh, at the beginning of the year, we're estimating was at one point three four and should be one point three oh. Now, I do want to, we're gonna take a look at the debt schedule in just a year. We could have a deficit of a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty thousand next year because our bond payments are gonna be more next year. And we're gonna look at that. But I, with us shifting the pennies over here, we're gonna be able to sustain our debt payments until our current bonds are paid off. And I'll show you that when we look at our bond payments. With, with the fund balance that we have right there, we should not have to put any more from our general fund. Again, that, the reason why we're able to do that is a couple of things. One, we have been refunding our debt at lower interest rates. So that means we're having to pay less every year. And then two, we have shifted our pennies as, as they have said, you're gonna have to pay your own debt. We have wisely taken their advice and shifted the pennies over there when they've said that your M and O rate has to decrease. So we have made the right decisions. And right now, again, you see, we're very close to balancing where we need to be, uh, for our debt payments. Um, the totals are on the other side. The, the total is one point five one eight nine. Our tax rate is going to stay the same as it has the last, I don't know, maybe twelve years or so. It's been, it's been constant for a long time. Any questions on this before we take a look at the comparison between last year and this year? So this is what, what we will be bringing to you on August the twenty-fourth for approval. This is what, um, uh, well, in, in the public, we will show this in the public meeting. But what gets posted on the website is actually the comparison between last year and this year. So let's take a look at that. So this will come out on our website Thursday. It has to go on our website. At the same time, the notice goes in the paper, which will be next Thursday as well. And again, this is just the comparison from last year to this year. Um, I, I do wanna point out that again, you notice that there is, um, a decrease in the amount of, uh, the, uh, instructional function. But again, a lot of that is gonna be picked up with S R three this year. And again, you can see the comparison. We won't go through all of these, but you can see, uh, technology, we're projecting needing a little bit more there. Um, a little bit less in professional development because S R three is covering that. And, um, a little bit more in instructional leadership. Um, excuse me. A tiny bit more in instructional leadership, seven hundred seventy-four thousand over seven hundred sixteen thousand. Um, and less in campus and, uh, and school leadership. The biggest reason for that is we only have five campuses. We don't have seven campuses anymore. So, um, we've already talked about counselors. They're gonna be paid out of the S R. So, uh, social work services, again, a lot of that CIS is being paid out of S R. Health services, a slight increase, uh, to cover the uniforms. And even though there are going to be only, there's gonna be less campuses that need a nurse. So that's considering less salaries as well, too, and still an increase overall in the budget. Um, extracurricular, again, um, Mr. Kufal pointed out that this was the budget last year, but we didn't spend near that last year. So this is more in line with what we project our expenditures to be. Um.
Yes, sir. What if, when the, after the principals get their little pot of money and then they spread it out to their different organizations on their, on their campus, they come back and say, you know, this, this is what, this is what lesson I got two years ago.
No.
No, this is, we have made sure that, um.
Didn't reduce.
We didn't reduce at all. So we have actually added to the campus budgets to help.
So we're also, we've also done training with, um, with each campus. Dr. Pitts, Ms. Spillino, I mean, with each campus principal and their secretary to make sure they know what they're spending, what it can be spent on, what the functions are, et cetera, and also with our athletic director.
The thing that'll, the thing that'll drive the phone calls, uh, is gonna be, how do you expect me to go to all my meets with this amount of money? When, you know, I got more than that three years ago, two years ago. But that's gonna be the, and again, that's, that's the hard question to answer.
Well, it's all a function of how many kids we have now compared to how many kids we had back then. We have, we have less students than we did several years now.
I, I hear you, but you're gonna take just as much money to go to football games. You get a ten cheerleader or twelve cheerleaders, it's gonna be the same cost. Well, that, I'm using that as an example. I mean, that's, that's where it gets down to the, the top thing. Because a lot of these programs, extracurriculars is a major component of the program.
Well, I, I hear where you are, but there's some things that are student-dependent. The number of uniforms you need is student-dependent. The number of meals you're buying for students is student-dependent. So it's, it's, uh, some of each.
Okay, I just, that's just the thing that, you know.
And playoffs, I mean, the more we go to playoffs, the more we advance.
That, that's me.
Yeah, the principal gives a budget, right?
Yes.
I was just wondering, cause there's. When you, when you see in the check register that somebody bought like, let's say, a hundred fifty-dollar wheelbarrow at low.
Well, I do that proactively, but I have to approve every expenditure that they have sent to me.
So you don't question the hundred and fifty-dollar wheelbarrow when no one dang well, they go get a wheelbarrow for fifty dollars?
No, I, I do question that.
Okay.
Uh, Sandy and I are both, we, we are, uh, system of checks and balances and we both check every single expenditure.
Yeah, was the hammer made out of gold or was it made out of, you know, wood and much metal?
No, and we routinely ask them to go back for it and to get other quotes. Now, the advantage is if, if they use Byboard, the competitive bidding has already been there and they're not gonna have a hundred fifty-dollar hammer when you get by it cheaper on Byboard. So if it's not on Byboard, we, we scrutinize those even further and ask them to get further quotes.
So there's, there's a process in place even before they get the purchase order, to even go buy the product or the item. It's called a requisition. So Dr. Pitts and myself, we both get it. We review the report every day, and we actually look at what's their bond. And if there's a question, after looking at it for so long, you kind of already know how much those items cost, so. And if it's something that we feel that needs a quote, then we'll call them and let them know, this is a little pricey, we'd like for you to get through quotes. And then, so it doesn't even get approved, until we've actually looked at everything there actually.
Okay, so if they, so somebody went on a field trip to HB, Walmart, or Lowe's, and went ahead and bought it, and, and the campuses are ready, and then you're getting a receipt.
No, they, they have to get it approved before they go out and buy it.
We see, we see a detailed report before they even get the purchase order to go to the store.
They, they have to bring to us a quote, and they have to enter a requisition, and we have to approve the requisition before they can buy it.
No, they choose to buy it with a P O.
Buy it with cash, buy it with a P O, right?
Right.
Right, you buy it with a purchase order.
If you don't have a purchase order, you can't buy anything anyway. The purchase order comes from them, so.
Right, cause they're not gonna reimburse you before you can buy it.
You gotta have a P O in hand to get the wheelbarrow.
Is this template ours or?
No, this is not ours. This is the standard one that we are required to use.
What's, what's misleading here will be, hey, if, and what gets published in some reports somewhere, cause I've seen it before, is the per pupil expenditure.
Right.
Is, we're not gonna be, the S R is, is across the board, district and district and district. But if, if, if I'm a parent and, and picking this up, or a taxpayer, and looking at this and saying, oh my God, you're, you know, you're telling me that COVID slide and all this, and you're decreasing the amount that you're spending on instructional, uh, and, and we're not. Is there any, I mean, is there any footnote or?
Here, so here's a recommendation that we can do. We post this on the website. We can post it with a footnote there, that we can say that, that additional instructional monies are included in S R 3, and so we can do that when we put it on our website.
And it's highlighted, the bolded, that is everything we can, uh, Barney and.
It's less.
Right.
And I think one thing that we're missing here is looking at the color. Which, which one are we gonna print in the, in the?
Uh, none, it doesn't get printed in the newspaper. This gets printed, uh, posted on our website.
All right.
The comparison gets pushed on our website.
Somewhere there has to be a total of the totals. You don't, you don't have that on here. You have, every segment is totaled, but you don't have an overall.
I can put that in the footnote. That's not on the, the template that they give us.
I, I understand. That's what I'm saying.
We, we could put that on there as well. We could post that on there as well.
But if, that's what I'm saying is, if you show, if you show what was the total from 2021 and 2122,
Okay.
They can look through and say, hey, you're spending more, we're spending less. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to go through it.
We're, we're budgeting, and that's the budget.
This isn't how much is.
Right, right.
And then we're, we're being more conservative with our budget.
Well, we can, we can definitely post that other one, and we can also add the footnotes as far as, and, and then we can also add the totals as well, too, in the footnotes as well.
I agree, but I think that's what the community is gonna wanna see.
Okay.
And that's how everybody reads that.
Go ahead.
Three questions. One, when we, when we rent commercial buses to take a team to, uh, out, out of district, district playoff, or something like that, we're definitely.
That comes from the general fund.
Okay, it doesn't come from the budget that's given to a individual team. We budget a team, like the football team or whatever. Do we budget on the basis of a 10-0 season, or do we budget on the basis of an 0-10 season?
We budget somewhere in the middle.
That may or may not be choosing the play.
Correct.
Okay, you, you can follow, cause let me.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. But, but, no, no, we don't put money in the budget for every single team to go to state, if that's what you're asking.
Well.
But we try to be conservative and have a little bit of leeway. And, and the thing is with the athletic budget is, it is, it is fluid where they have a general administration pot, and it can be moved a little bit based on from what one team needs if they have to go to the playoffs.
Second question, um, we have, uh, I was talking to Mr. Perez earlier, he explained this, his check sheet to me. And we still have some positions that are vacant. And well, vacant, frozen, we're not gonna hire. Vacant, but no hire against, cause I guess we'll wait to see whether we're gonna really need that percent or not.
Vacant and frozen means we're gonna wait to see if we get an influx of kids.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Absorbed means.
It's small.
Yes.
So, to answer your question, absorbed, I did not put in the budget. Vacant, but frozen, I did put in the budget. So if we don't get those.
That's what he explained to me, that it's,
Yes.
At what point in time, that, that money, I, I would assume would go against that 750,000 to a million three deficit you project, because it's in the budget right now.
Right, right, exactly.
No salary going out of that.
So the plan on that is to help the fund balance whatever vacancies are.
Okay, that's something that will be kept up to speed on, up to date on, is like, like you did before at the very beginning, it was, if I save that money, because that was this, that position, that position.
Yeah, generally.
It's a good form, and it answers a lot of the questions you have, but if you don't keep track of it, if it's not constantly there, we don't, we don't.
Right, right.
And again, that's part of that, that budget decision, what are you gonna do? Well, yeah, yeah, it's a million three, but eh, we'll probably save a little bit there.
Right, right.
We still got attrition factors, right?
Right.
We're not gonna hire, we're not gonna hire pairs. We got access pairs.
Do we want, uh, any other questions on the budget?
This was a question.
Okay.
And the last one is, um, thank God, now we got the.
Let's move on.
Great question, though.
Well, can I recommend, we take just a two-minute break before we move on to the next agenda, since we have several that have left?
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions on budget before I move to the tax rate? Okay, so, before we look at what we're gonna post in the newspaper, I wanna give you an idea of where we are with our debt. So, currently we have, let me make it a little smaller. Currently, we have, uh, principal of 56.78 million dollars that we still owe. We're gonna take all the way to 2043, 22 more years to clean that off. We pay interest every year. Right now, our interest is very close to our principal, but you see that over the years, we're gonna be paying more principal, just like any other loan. But we're gonna pay 25 more million dollars of principal over those 22 years. So we're gonna end up paying back 81.85 million dollars, uh, over the next several years. Now, we're hoping that we will have other opportunities to refinance some of these, uh, some of our bonds.
What is the total number of bonds? I remember asking this a long time ago, and.
Total number of bonds, I think it's close to nine. Sandy, you have any idea how many different series? So every, every, like, there's a series 2011 bond. I think we have 11 right now, all the way through 20. Okay. Yeah, somewhere around there. Uh, depending on when we took out the bond, and, uh, when it's going to mature, and, uh.
They're all bonds. There's no certificates of obligation now.
No, we, we just have bonds.
Good.
Actually, I do that, if I'm gonna do it to you really quick.
Oh, you're getting the number of bonds, Sandy?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so while she's doing that, as you can see, look at our bond payment every year. Um, like, let, let's say net debt service, 4.6 million now. We will not be able to build a new facility until, cause we can barely afford our bond payments right now. Until we start getting around in the 3 million range, uh, we're probably not gonna be able to build a new facility. Our INS tax rate right now is 49 cents, and there is a a rule that you cannot go over 50 cents to buy, uh, to service new debt. So right now, we are maxed out in the debt we have for, uh, over a decade to come.
So the next option for us, in case there is a catastrophe, because we cannot borrow, taking more borrow out, would be increase the tax rate.
Well, we wouldn't even be able to increase the, the, the problem is, if, if we go back to the other, let me go back to the other document for just a second. So right now, our total tax rate is 1.5189. Our debt rate is right at the ceiling. We can't increase our debt rate over 50 cents for new debt. Now, if you have old debt, you can increase what you need as much as possible to pay your bills. You have to pay your bills. But they're saying that you can't take out any new debt. Um, so this is already at the ceiling. You can't go much more than that. So, we cannot take out any more new debt until we start cleaning down our old debt. Um, if we're, so let me go back to.
Do we hold a vote to increase taxes?
No, it's not special.
Well, yeah, right. You, and if you're gonna increase your tax rate on the M and O side, you have to have a tax ratification election as well, too. So approved by the voters. Um, now, on the INS side, you don't need a tax ratification election. The problem, uh, is just, again, you can't take out new debt to go over that 50 cents right there.
Our current statement of foreign expenditure on August the 15th shows six. And I'm not sure, the only one that it might not include is the one that we just refunded.
Right, there's just, is there a series 2020 and a series 2021 on there? Because there are two new ones.
Okay, no, so there is eight.
Okay.
Six plus those two are eight.
And it's hard to track, when they're refinanced, it's hard to track back what that originated at.
So, uh, that's, that's where we are with our debt, um, right now. Um, this is what we have to post in the paper. So, let's take a look at the things that are a part of it. At the top, it has when the public meeting's gonna take place, the date and time, and the place. It has what the maintenance and operations tax rate is, 1.0265. You know what, let me take that bigger. It has, uh, what the M and O rate is, what the INS rate is. It's going to have the maintenance and operations decrease. The reason why the maintenance and operations is a big decrease, um, in the taxes is because our M and O rate is decreasing, and the state is picking up more of that. Um, uh, again, the reason why our debt is decreasing is because we have had, um, a, we've done some bond refundings. Um, it has a comparison of last year's property value versus this year's property value, and ver, and new properties, so it has several different categories comparing last year's property values to this year's property values. It has the total amount of debt that we have right here, which is what you saw in the debt schedule. Um, it has last year's rates, this year's rates. Um, the rate to maintain is kind of an apples and oranges comparisons. It's basically based on last year's property value, so that's not really an apples to oranges comparison, and that is a calculation that is done with comparison of last year's and this year's. It automatically is calculated for us. Uh, you see the average market rate of residences, and, and how much of that is taxable. Um, and then the average increase in taxes. The increase in taxes, again, is not a function of us increasing the tax rate. It is a function of property values going up. If your properties or values are going up, even if your tax rate stays the same, you're gonna be paying a little bit more in tax. Um, it talks about the maximum rate that we could adopt without an election. This is based on, like, we have a $40,000 deficit in our debt service. If we were to adopt a rate of 1.5191, we would have zero. It would actually break even. So if you're gonna adopt a rate higher than the debt you have, you'd have to get some type of approval, but our, our, uh, we are not adopting a rate higher than that. And then you see our, our fund balances. This was, um, uh, at the end, end of the previous fiscal year, this is what our fund balances were. And that's what will be posted in the paper next Thursday. Um, any questions on that? Okay, I have just two more short things to show you. So, uh, one thing that we're gonna bring to you next Tuesday is every year, the, uh, tax assessor collector, they certify, um, they give you a letter, and they certify how much, uh, excess debt you're expected to collect. they give you a letter and they certify how much excess debt you're expected to collect. We're not expected to collect anything more than what we need to pay our debt. And they also certify a collection rate, too. They always anticipate 100%, even though we don't anticipate that. There's also going to be some money from prior years that they're going to get and there's going to be some penalties and interest. But the, uh, the appraisal district always anticipates 100% for the following year. We're going to bring this for approval to the board meeting next Tuesday. And then finally, the last thing I have to show you is appraisal district, board of directors. So we currently had two board members on the last appraisal board for the appraisal district. We have enough votes, if you look at the votes, let me. Hold it up a little bit. So this is how many votes we're going to be able to cast, which is 1,663. There are five members on the appraisal board. We have enough votes to really get two members on the appraisal board. In the past, we have always recommended members from this board to, to serve on the appraisal board, to, um, to basically advocate for board interest. In the past, we've only had one on the board, but last time, we decided that since we have enough votes to cast to get two people on there, we were going to do that. So this is something that we, this is just a preview. We're, we eventually need to decide a couple of things. One, how many nominations we want to put on the appraisal board, one. Or two, two, who is going to be on that, who are nominees are going to be. And then three, how many votes we're going to cast for each of the nominees. Any questions on that? We have to, I think it's by, uh, October, somewhere between the 5th and 15th, that we need to get our nominees in. So we will probably in September be bringing this to you so that we can make a decision as a board. We actually have to do a resolution of who we're going to nominate. And we'll do that sometime in September. Any other questions?
Is this, we discussed? We, yes, it's. Right now, we have two ex-board members.
Correct.
On the appraisal board. That's something that we want to continue doing? Or we want to put active board members on that?
There's, alright. The appraisal board. This, this particular board is an administrative board. This is not a board that reviews price values and all this other kind of stuff. They serve as an administrative board to the administration of the adglor, of the appraisal district that sets their salaries, that sets the bids and goes out and finds appraisers to do the valuations and does, does a variety of things. So it's, it's a very administrative board. There are two schools of thought. One school of thought is that, well, you need to have active board members to truly represent the interest of the, of the district. The other school of thought is, and that's kind of a conflict of interest. That's a fox garden, the hen house, because we're the major beneficiary, beneficiary of the tax rate. We have a higher tax rate than anyone else. We stepped into a political minefield when we.
You're taking this while this.
Two people on that, on that board. It, you can see the, the variety of interests are there. There are certain entities out there that, that cannot put a person on the board. A combination of those can. And, and we were attacked mercilessly last year, or two years ago, whenever we did this. Because it should be a representative from the Rivera area. There should be a representative from the kind of rural areas. And so I, many entities will reach out into the community and get somebody completely disjointed from their board, but interested and understanding the, the interest of a board. Others will sit a existing board member, but as you have elections every four years, you could have a mismatch, as we do now. So I, there's no, it, it's, it's kind of a philosophical deal. And in my mind, it's, it needs to be somebody who understands kind of the role that needs to be played there, a, as opposed to necessarily a, a board member. We had, we had one board member who really wanted to be on it because they wanted to be able to set property values. That is not what this board does at all. That's a whole separate board that's appointed.
One thing I would want to know is, do any of the current survey members that we put on, or that we, and they both got on, do they still want to do it?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be the first question. And then the second one is, from a purely political thing, and by representative, we should have two. Because if we only have one, we're underrepresented based on our, yeah, and for years, that's what we did. We were, we put one on, but, you know, we have 1,500 votes, there's 5,000, we're 30% of the vote. But if you only put one on, you're 20% of the vote. So you're not proportionally represented. The other side, if you put two on, you're overrepresented, because you represent 40% of the vote. And it also caused a lot of consternation last year with, with the county in particular, because they spread their votes out across different, different entities and, and it caused some, some ill will. And I know you have this good neighbor policy, so this might be an opportunity to.
Yeah, and, and with very few exceptions, the city and the school districts' boundaries almost match. And so the city and the, and the school district, KISD, really kind of have the, the same interest. And while they have enough votes to set, seat two members, but we should be looking at somebody who's interested in both of those, because it's, it's, then you have the outside, the, the city limits jurisdiction that needs to have a representative, more than likely.
It, it, it costs some hard feelings.
It's a, it's a, it's a scurry process.
Judge Mergrid, and I understand why. Because he feels he's got to represent the whole county, and so he spreads his vote out.
Right.
But at what expense to us?
Right.
So it's kind of that balances to.
Well, if we got rid of one, one, one board, who would it go to here? Because I've already received phone calls on this, about what we're going to do, so I don't know how this works, do people try to fight for the, the seat?
We got enough votes, we got enough votes that if we would, that if we pursued a certain strategy, we shouldn't discuss that strategy here, we could put two people on. I mean, they have.
But if we don't, who does it go to?
Well, we have in the past done some varieties of things. We have looked at the nominees that were there and, and thought people who had legitimate interest in the well-being of the district, who may not have been our candidate, may have been somebody else's candidate. And we have divided votes up with, with people that, that we believe would, would have the school district's interest or had a good business mind, understood the role that they, that they were playing. We have, at other times, dumped 100% of our vote on our portion.
Yeah.
And that kind of burns the, I mean, that assures that they get, but, but all the excess is just kind of thrown away and let, let everybody else figure it out. It kind of, in my opinion, it kind of comes down to the actual slate that's presented.
But we have to name our candidate to that slate before the slate is presented.
I know.
And you want to put two on, then you better have two candidates. And if you don't put two on, you only have one, well, what we do, you know, that gives us some latitude to maybe pick and choose who the other person is, because, you know, 5,000 votes, 1,000 is going to get them in.
Yeah.
Is your point, Colonel Price, that just because we nominate two, we don't have to put any of our votes on one of them?
I think we nominate two, we all, we have the obligation to support both.
Okay.
But if we nominate one, then we probably do need to look at the slate, see if there's somebody else on that slate that we feel would also represent our interest. And last year was ugly, because some districts didn't even put, put names into the slate and then they came back after the fact saying, we didn't know, and that, that.
Right, there was.
I mean, it was ugly on so many different levels.
Yes. Yes.
I remember.
And my perspective was, we got enough of two, let's just go with two. I'm not so sure that was necessarily the right thing to do, but, well, something that other people were doing with their votes, I think, you gave these guys one of your votes and they went to have like 10 of their own. I mean, that, to me, that also struck me as being kind of. But maybe, maybe the answer, the answer itself, if, uh, one of, one of the two current people that are on the board don't want to be, or we don't, you know, or maybe we just select somebody altogether different. Maybe they don't want, maybe neither one wants to stay on the board, neither one, well, our board anymore. So that's a possibility as well.
So we're bringing this to you early this year so we can have these kind of discussions again. And at the latest, I believe the last board meeting in September, we need to have it approved, but I would, it would be great if we could have it figured out by the first meeting of September.
Yeah, because we ran into a real timing issue last time. It, it, that was a big part of the problem, was that the deadline fell on a holiday or something. Uh, it was a mess. It was, it was a mess.
Where we can control some things, we try to.
Well, in this case, we were trying to control it to our best, but if you're spit others, we said it, we tried.
All we're controlling right now is just giving it to you early, as soon as possible. We all figure.
That's what we can do, is if we choose to, we can go, I'm just showing this up there. But we can make sure these other entities know that this is coming up.
We can be neighborly.
We can be neighborly and remind them that, hey, you know, last time, we got into trouble with this. There were people that missed, missed the deadlines, we just want to let everybody, remind everybody that it's coming up.
See, the next meeting is like, well, if you got to be reminded, then it obviously wasn't that important.
You're, you're talking about a home, and you got a home, it's a little elected. If we're going by that, that.
And that was hardly true, Mr. Lucy, that was part of it, too. It was a product of the divided board and.
And, but I think, I think if we're allowed to, that they've decided that based on our voting, that we get to, and you ought to put together two people go up there.
Yes, we can, and we got 1,500 votes, we can split or not split or whatever.
And we can always discuss in the meeting, is this something we even care about? One of you has to stay home in the meeting.
No, 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 you've got two seats out of a five-person board. Expectation, you're going to show up at the.
I, I understand that, but having four out of five, it's still a quorum.
No, no, but it doesn't have to be a sitting board member.
I agree with that, it can be whoever. Are we done?
Great job.
Okay, let's, uh, let's close this gap a little. Uh, there being no further action. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, okay, fair enough. Oh, do I have to do that? I guess I didn't have to do that. I didn't have to do that. Go home, watch the game.
I want to thank Dunder Pitts and Miss Sandy Gallica for all the work today to do a tireless effort.
I think I've been to every one of these for the last 20 years, and that's by far the best one.
Please, the board desk, please.
Hey, if it's good, I'll call it good, if it's bad, I'll call it bad.
Nice, so leave that to yourself.
It was also the best question, but I agree.
Best question, best response.